Okay.
Shoe repair.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got a hearing at seven fifteen on the two zoning articles. So we'll do a little bit of business beforehand. Uh, I think we'll kind of jump ahead here to get Doug Riedel's here from the county engineer's office in regard to our roadwork. Um. We have, um. Changed what we're doing somewhat on their advice on the paving and gorseage. We're going to do pavement repair and do a crack seal. Pave next season. Maybe try to do some drainage also. So that contract instead of being two fifty six oh fifty two is going to be a hundred and forty nine thousand twenty two dollars and forty eight cents. So, and, uh, it actually is going to be a little bit more now. I talked to Austin, the contractor yesterday. He's recommending another section of payment repair. So that will be additional, but if we, um. Make a motion to, um. Accept that contract. And we can sign it a later date. That's okay with the board.
Sure.
Yeah. So I would move that we. Uh, proceed with the contract with Shelley, uh, contractors. For their, for our road work.
We doing that originally with the two fifty six fifty two?
No, no, no. It's gonna be the one forty nine oh twenty two plus this additional section he's proposing and I. I don't know what it's gonna be. It's not gonna be a huge amount of money.
Hmm.
So. But this will get assigned so the contractor can. Have it before the next meeting.
Okay. I would make that motion.
I'll second. Second. All in favor, I.
Aye.
Motion carried. So the contract is approved to be signed. And here's the. Sign the back page.
Hmm.
Do you say you want to jump in on the financials?
Sure. Uh, April bank reconcile sitting on the table, ready for signature appropriation and ledger. Email to you guys. Uh, trustees may have to approve the following minutes, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty three regular minutes made for two thousand twenty three special minutes.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve April nineteenth regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, I.
Aye.
I. Motion carried. May fourth special meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, I.
Uh.
Okay, minutes are approved.
Approve the warrants and vouchers setting up air. Warrant number one, two, nine, zero, six through warrant number one, two, nine, four, eight. Voucher number forty seven dash. Two, zero, two, three through voucher. Fifty six. Dash two thousand twenty three total amount one hundred and eighty one thousand nine hundred twenty six dollars and sixty seven cents.
Hmm, so moved. Second.
All in favor, I.
Aye.
I. Motion carried. Warrants are approved.
Well, I gotta look real quick, Dave, because I didn't know you guys were changing. Oh. Back down to that other amount.
Okay. The, uh. You got a supplemental appropriation here, is that?
That's what I'm trying to figure out right now, because that was for that hundred and fifty six.
Right.
Just go ahead and transfer it because we're going to need it anyways.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Transfer from one thousand dash seven sixty dash seven thirty dash zero, zero, zero. To. One thousand dash three, three, zero dash three, six, zero dash zero, 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 an amount of twenty six thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars and eighty one cents.
Have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
What, what is the, what is it?
We're shifting money to, uh, for the roadwork.
Roads, roads, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, all in favor, I.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Raise the purchase order to Shelley company in amount of a hundred and forty nine thousand twenty two dollars. For the twenty twenty three Delaware County Harlem Township Road Improvements Program.
Okay. Your motion to that effect. Where are we? Where are we here?
So, is that, is that not what you were discussing earlier the other day?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I need approval for.
She needs a voucher or.
Do you need it in two fifty six?
No, it's actually.
Forty nine.
Oh, okay, well, you said two fifty six.
Unfortunately, no, that was before when we were paving.
Yeah, so we're, so you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I asked for a hundred and forty nine thousand twenty two dollars.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, I.
Aye.
I. Motion carried. All right.
Hmm. So.
The, um. Administrative offices received a lot of calls about the AEP, um, proposed power lines.
Hmm.
And after checking Delaware County Prosecutor's Office, we've been advised that five nineteen point eleven. Generally, State and Township has no authority of zoning or otherwise to regulate public utilities. And I think there was a letter composing on the website, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um. And I'll recap the roadworks, what we're doing is, um.
Can I mention something there, Dave?
Yes.
I would like to suggest that the board consider. Uh, taking a position on this, pretty much in line with. This letter asking them to try to see if there's an alternative. Rather than just rolling over and saying, okay, we can't do anything about it. This is going to dissect our township pretty severely.
Uh, that's worth a try, I guess, but.
It's, I know we don't have jurisdiction officially, but. If we could go on record as a position of the board. Dating our opposition and asking them to look for any alternative.
At least not dissect across, come catty corner across.
Yeah.
Use our existing utility routes, use our existing poles that are coming, you know, going elsewhere throughout the township. Coming up from the south in their commercial area, uh, some alternative other than dissecting this township.
Yeah, that can't hurt.
I just think.
Fair enough.
Is that fair?
No. Seems good.
All right, I'll draft something up on.
Okay.
Yeah. We still don't know where it's going to go yet, right? As far as we know.
No, they're, uh, I don't know if anybody's, well, most people probably seen the maps that are involved. Has, uh, I forget how many segments, they're all numbered. And I went to the one public meeting and. They say they don't have any preference of where it's going to go. They're just taking input from residents and wanting to. Be on your property and check for the environmental or wetlands and so forth. They were trying to glean information from the public, not the other way around.
Hmm.
They weren't putting any information out, so. Okay. I think that, to me, I would think the route should go more where the growth's gonna be.
Where what?
Where the growth's gonna be. For potential growth. Instead of going through residential or.
Farmland.
Farmland, that type of thing.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
All right, we got a minute here and we'll. Start the hearing.
Want me to? Seven after eight.
Uh, I can start it. I think I can last that long. Maybe. Okay, at this time, we're going to recess the business portion of the meeting. And call the, uh, hearing to order for the, um. Zoning articles, uh, it's new article thirty one. Uh, planned unit mixed use, uh, procedures. Article thirty four is mixed use district. As adopted as part of the Harlem Township, um. Zoning Commission, uh, their recommendations to the trustees. The application, I will state this, was received in a special meeting, May fourth. And that set the hearing for tonight at seven fifteen. Otherwise, if we would have received the application tonight. We would have had to have a special hearing night because we would have been over our thirty days waiting until the June regular meeting. So that's why we did a special meeting. To receive the application. We felt it was better to have the hearing on a regular night. Than to, uh, set it as a special meeting off our regular dates of meetings. The ad was in the Delaware Gazette on May sixth for the hearing, as well as posted at the rear of the building as usual. And it was also on Facebook and it was posted on the sign. With that, um, we'll start the hearing. Holly, uh, would you like to give a presentation on this?
Hmm.
Good evening, everyone. Um. Exciting to be here to talk about our first overlay district coming out of the book strategy guide. Um, as trustee Jackson indicated, uh, there were several parts to this. There is the, um, mixed use overlay standards. The mixed use overlay procedures. And then there are also definitions that would go into your definition section of your zoning code that apply to the mixed use overlay district. Um, just to take you through kind of where we've been with this, it started with the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, through several different, uh, renditions, um, and feedback from them, um. Um, and feedback from them, um, over the last several weeks and months. Uh, and then they made a recommendation to, uh, to initiate the amendment process, uh, which was done so at the zoning commission level. Um, the zoning commission held its public hearing and recommended approval, um, of the, um. Proposed standards that are in front of you tonight. Uh, so, uh, just to go over, um, broadly what's included in them, uh. It's include, it includes that southern boundary area, which is along Fancher Road. Um, spanning from, um, the Smothers Road. Um, roundabout over to county line. Um, it includes the twelve units per acre, um, commercial residential uses, uh, on the western side. Um, and then as you taper to the east, it tapers down to the eight dwelling units per acre, which is in line with the overlay districts. Or the recommendations of the Quick Strategy Guide. There are also a number of different development standards that are in here, including three hundred foot setbacks along the, um, primary roadways. Um, and then that setback is, um, established from the right away lines. So, for example, um. Fancher Road, we expect to, um, expand going into the future, so. We don't know what that ultimate right away would be, but talking with the county engineer's office, if we preserved a hundred and fifty foot right away. They felt that that was, um, sufficient, so seventy-five foot from center line starts that future right away, and then the two hundred foot setback would be from that. Um. Right away line, so that we're not cutting into that two hundred foot setback when the road expands, if something were to be developed prior to the road, um, being expanded. Which we expect development to happen probably before the roads are expanded. It includes, um. A number of different landscaping, um, buffers that are required. Uh, there is one that is, um, a woodland buffer within that two hundred foot, um, setback. And they, the standards outline what needs to be within that buffer, it goes from prairie type land into shrubbery into large wooded areas. Um, and gives the dimensions for what the, that two hundred foot setback would be with those different, um, landscaping, um, standards. Then we have what's called a prairie, uh, landscaping buffer, that is when a, um, property abuts an existing single family house. Not necessarily something that is zoned residential and doesn't have a house on it, it has to have an existing house on it at the time the adjacent property is developing. And in that, in those cases, when that existing, um, structure is within a hundred foot of the adjacent property line. Then the applicant has to provide a hundred foot prairies back. That essentially gives them the two hundred foot, um, setback. Um, that we're trying to achieve from the roadway. And again, if there is no existing house on that parcel, then they can just go ahead and follow the regular side and backyard setbacks. Um, according to the overlay district. This district provides for a variety of different types of uses, um, talking about the commercial residential as well as, um. Regular commercial uses, um, restaurants and offices and early childhood, here, childhood education. Um, including daycares and elementary and middle schools, um. And then a number of different, um, retail options through here. Um. As far as, um, it, we do require stormwater, uh, requirements. Um, obviously, when things go through the subdivision regulations at the county level, there are stormwater requirements that have to be met there. But we want to try to have a much of a regional approach to stormwater as the, we can. Um, so we've built that into this, we've also built, um, pathways into it, so. Um, walking paths or multi-use paths depending upon which side of the road they're on. Um, street trees and, um. Internal landscaping requirements as well, and then there's standardized sign requirements and, um, both minimum and maximum parking requirements. We do both minimum and maximum to make sure that we're not getting this huge sea of asphalt out there. Um, that we're providing enough to, um, service those particular uses. Um, but then we're capping it, um, where we think that it's sufficient to cover, uh, the highest demand for those uses. We also encourage mixed use parking, I'm sorry, shared parking for mixed uses. Um, there is a series of architectural requirements as well, based upon the, uh, recommendations of the Quick Strategy Guide. Uh, we use a lot of the illustrations that were in the Quick Strategy Guide. Um, we've incorporated those directly into, um, the overlay district. And requiring three hundred and sixty degree, um, elevations. And requiring natural materials and only allowing, um, accent materials such as, um, vinyl, um, for those accents. Not, they cannot have, um, vinyl siding as a predominant, uh, material. And then what it talks about building colors and then design elements so that, um, buildings are broken up. Um, by windows and doors and dormers. Um, there are certain design elements that have to be built into, uh, the architecture of the buildings, um, and different. Standards, whether or not the, uh, it's at the front facing facade or a side or rear, um, this, uh. Rear facing wall. Um, so that's kind of the highlights of what these standards are, I do wanna, um, mention the procedures. Um, because this is a five nineteen point oh two one C. Um, out of the Ohio Revised Code, it is an overlay district, which we have gone over a number of times, so I'm not going to reiterate what that means. Um, but what I do wanna indicate is that when somebody pulls down the cloud. Um, that they have to submit a development plan to the township. And that is, the way we have that set up right now is that it would go to the zoning commission. Um, for a public hearing. And they would review it and give a recommendation to their trustees. The trustees would not hold another public hearing. Um, you would just accept it and act on it the same night, um, because it is an administrative act, it is not a legislative act. You do not have to have a public hearing on it. Um, so there are different options that the Ohio Revised Code provide for that, and that's the. Recommendation coming out of the Strategic Planning Committee and the Zoning Commission is that particular setup. Um, so I wanted to touch on that. Uh, we also have had, um, conversations, um, with the county engineer's office regarding connectivity. And making sure that, um, they see, uh, these developments kind of upfront. Um, so that they can decide, help give guidance on where maybe some unloaded, uh, collector roads might need to be made. And that you can incorporate those into, um, these development plans so that it helps to create. Um, consistency coming out of zoning and going into the subdivision regulations. So we've built language into, um, the code requiring, requiring them to get a, um, connectivity memo from the engineer's office. So that was generated from talking with Rob Riley and, and his, um, cohorts at the general, at the, um, county engineer's office. And then last but not least, I wanna mention, um, the Joint Economic Development District. It is one thing that we have recommended coming out of the Quick Strategy Guide. Um, that is the, the opportunity to partner with a, an adjacent municipality and require, um, new. Um, businesses coming into this overlay district to join, um, and then that would furnish a. Um, income tax based upon the municipality that we're partnering with and would help reduce the likelihood of annexation. Um, as part of this, um, review process, um, and part of the requirements, the applicant would be required to. Um, be a part of that JED, um, and we've had that language provided to us from legal counsel that. We work with it for other townships on similar issues. Um, so we have incorporated that language in based upon legal counsel's recommendations. Um, and that will again help generate funding for you. And then also, we have included language in the approval criteria stating that the developer has to provide. Um, a funding package to you and you as the township have to decide that that's an adequate funding package. To build and maintain that project over the long term, and you can utilize that as a criteria of approval or not, not approving it. And that's where the JED comes in with that as well. So that's an overview, um, of it, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, regarding specific items that you may.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, what Polly? Went over? Um, this might be a question for Mike Cabler, did. The recommendations from, uh, regional planning, there was twelve or thirteen items, did you pretty well go through those?
Yes, we went through each and every one of them and addressed them all. Uh. The items that, uh, were identified that, um. Have been addressed in changes between draft two, draft three, they're looking at draft three. So those changes were incorporated into this draft.
Okay.
Now, and we received the recommendations. In time for us to hold this, I mean, we, we didn't complete it all in one, uh, in one night.
I realize that.
Yeah, we recessed and it was at the second. I'll follow up immediately. When we completed the hearing, at that time, we went through.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else got any questions before we close the public portion? Gentlemen?
I have a couple, uh. We'll start, we'll just start with the beginning, the, the, the pre-application discussion, I, I get, I, I questioned the. Uh, it says prior to submitting a formal application and development plan, the applicant shall engage in informal discussion with staff from township and participate in one workshop. Is there, is it really, I mean, if, if this is all preliminary. Information that he's, the, the developer is trying to get. Would that be able to be just handled? Discussion with the zoning inspector and not have to go through the entire commission?
Yeah, that was a change that came out of the zoning commission, we originally had, um, different language in there going into the zoning commission. Um, so, um, that is totally up to the trustees, but I agree that it is an administrative act, you're just checking off whether or not the. Criteria have been met and the standards have been met, um, so it seems to be more of a, um. A zoning inspector's role than a workshop through the zoning commission.
And I guess the other part, it, if, if we stayed with the way this wording is. That would mean the applicant that came in for this one, if he came in for another one later, would have to go through this same workshop. So we're, it, this, to me, it feels like, I. It's almost like we're delaying something or generating more of an issue than needs to be at this particular time. Uh, we have as, you know, we have a full-time zoning inspector now who should be able to look to see if the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted.
Right.
Um. I'm not sure that that necessarily has to be there. So I don't know how we wanna, if we wanna have wording changes or if we want, if, I've got several, so if you want me to just go through them all, we can.
I, I can, um, tell you what it was in the previous draft prior to the one that you're seeing. Um, it said, prior to submitting a formal application and a development plan, the applicant shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township. And no more member, no more than two members of the zoning commission. And we did that because that would not be a quorum, so they're at least getting input from the zoning commission, but it's not a meeting that is. You know, has to wait for a certain date and be published and all that, so.
That's my concern is, that, is the fact that if, if these are formal, then the dates, they have to be announced, the time that that delays. You know, at that, I mean, at that preliminary, beginning stages of this whole process.
If we change anything on this document, does it have to go back to the commission?
No.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Always in the past, if we changed something, the commission sent us, you had to go back and.
That, that is not a requirement, if you did that, that was a courtesy. Um, when you do rezonings, um, zoning commission is solely a recommendation to you and you have the right to change it. And by simple majority vote, you can change it, it's, it used to be unanimous. Um, and then the Ohio Revised Code was changed so that just it's two out of three of you.
Gentlemen, I agree with what you say in terms of you have the right to. Approve as is. Modify or reject. And it just takes a majority vote. It does not, as she said, it doesn't have to come back.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that.
That answered my question.
Further clarification, there is no announcement necessary, uh, this, which is so much you. Taking a little, you know, the, the regular meeting. Workshop meeting was the, the meeting at which that. Free discussion would take place in formal discussion or. Uh. A special meeting would be scheduled. So it wouldn't necessarily, it's not an announcement in the sense of like angry, that's what, it's just. The zoning commission does have to provide public notice in meetings.
Well, but the intent of this then, it's like I said, if, if, if you have a developer who has, is gonna be coming in for multiple. Areas. Would this, that hearing would have, or not hearing, but workshop would have to be held for each one of those if this stays as it's currently written.
Multiple applications. Uh, yes, I mean, it would be, there would be multiple applications in that, basically, it's a, the whole process would apply to each.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so each application, there would have to be a workshop.
Tony?
Uh, the point of the workshop thing was to. Address any issues the public might have. It would be an opportunity before the developer got too far into something to meet with neighbors if necessary and, and get feedback. That's essentially what we do with preliminary meetings. Now, for. Plan districts.
So the workshop. I mean, if, if I'm listening, hearing what you said, if I'm understanding. Somehow this is being announced public wise, that there is going to be a workshop to just, just for the preliminary discussion of this.
No. It's just, if, if people are interested in what's going on at any particular time, they see that we have. A scheduled meeting. And they can, you know, like all public meetings. They show up or not.
I, I just, I, I just think that this need, the original way this was written still gave that opportunity. For the commission to see it and hear it and. It, 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 there's no delay, and, and this, this is the whole, I, I just. The delay, the delay, the delay. I don't understand it all.
Public is still have the opportunity to.
Absolutely, there's still gonna be a hearing, there, there's everything else.
Hearing, yeah.
Yeah, right. So. So you strike that verbiage, you have to change it.
I would, I would recommend that we go to the original wording that was in the original, that was presented originally to the. Zoning Commission.
Which is what I read.
Which is what you'd read after the fact. Do we, should we do each one at a time?
I would, um, and then. Well, I mean, I would get consensus like of what you think and then at the end make a motion of which ones you're changing.
And since this is such lengthy wording on each change that could potentially be lengthy wording, um. Holly has the wording in the document, if she could send the changes to me so I can have that.
I can do that, thank you.
I, on this particular, in section thirty-one oh two, the pre-application, I would, I would like to make a motion that we. Adopt. That original language as far as the two members. And the, uh, the staff, Holly, if you could read that again, I would appreciate it.
So we would be replacing, um, the. Um, first line. Well, we, deleting the first line in the draft that you have and replacing it with. The language that says, prior to submitting a formal application and a development plan. The applicant shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township and no more than two members of the zoning commission.
Might be part of our. Who will, once we approve this. We'll submit to. Yeah, if we're, if we can prove it. Yeah, we're changing, well. We're. Having a motion to change that paragraph and then we'll move on to the next and then we'll. How many do you have, Tom?
And this, I think, three in the procedures and several in the overlays.
I, I might have thought here, and you correct me if I'm wrong, if we. Approve the documents, submit to these changes. Approve the documents, subject to these changes. In other words, we're approving the document first, not approving these before we approve the document.
So what, what I would like to do is go through each one of them and know like. That that's what you're proposing. And then at the end of the public hearing, say you're making a motion to approve the document.
I could do that. I misunderstood. I thought that's what you wanted was each one. All right, okay. The second one I have, it's, the applicant shall, I'm just questioning why we didn't put a number. It is the thirty-one oh four, the applicant should prepare and submit a formal application and planning and development plan with a number of hard copies. There's no number there.
Yeah, and when it went into zoning commission, it had ten as the number. I don't know the reason why that change was made.
I, I think it was just to provide flexibility in case you wanted more than ten or less, so that you would be able to say.
I think we need to have a set number.
Right.
In the past, we've used thirteen plus the original.
I mean.
Require or else.
Okay.
Tom.
I think from memory, I think the part of the wording was number of, of applications as determined by the zoning. They would decide at that time how many. One, thirteen, I'm going through a lot of electronic. You don't, you don't have, I mean, a single case number.
When your proposal comes to us, you would have that number in there.
Well, it would be as determined by the zoning commission and, and at that, at that stage, the zoning inspector would say to the applicant, and he can.
And it does say that a number of hard copies as determined by the zoning commission. That's what the version that you have in your hand is.
The original said ten though.
And the original said ten, just, there was no zoning commission discretion, it was just.
And we're not sure that even ten would be needed at the front end. That may not be.
Can, can we just use the number we've always used, say thirteen?
Well, the thirteen is what we have used historically.
That, well, that's what I'm saying, could we just, I mean, I just think, I personally, I think some number needs to be there.
Large document.
Yes. That's a huge, well, that's what I'm saying, I think a, a. Just to keep consistency across the board as we go through all these different, different things, if we have a. Set number. Then I don't care if it's a, you know, you, you, the person coming in, it's going to know upfront without having to come and sit down with anybody. They could read this and say, oh, well, they're, I'm going to need ten copies, so. I mean, right now they have no clue how many copies they need.
What if we said ten or subject to the discretion of the board, that way we've got a number in there. As a minimum.
I think that would work.
The board.
Ten as a minimum, okay.
And, well, if the board says they need eight.
Okay.
Would be subject to their discretion to come off of that number, but that would be.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or other, or as otherwise.
Determined by the.
At the zoning.
Yeah.
Commission. That's a big.
Yeah.
Okay, Tony.
And ten is probably quite reasonable. Where we got the thirteen in the past was pick zoning commission members, the zoning director, the secretary. And then there was always a clean copy kept on file and then U three. And I think that came up with thirteen.
Okay. Well, thirteen.
So when it coming, the, the process that sort of followed, the trustees won't necessarily, they don't need copying.
Exactly, it wouldn't be the, the copy of the.
Three would be coming out, thus might, maybe that's how you definitely can, I don't know how.
I think, I think that's what we kind of did, to be honest with you, if I remember my history, for sure. I, so those, actually, those are the only two things I have in the procedures.
Okay.
So I guess on that, I would recommend that we. A minimum of and subject to the.
Discretion.
Discretion of the board.
Right. Holly, just so I'm clear on this. Step us through a, a request for a change in this document from, let's say, the board. They, they're asking us to, for a certain change, would it be just a normal motion by. It doesn't have to be unanimous to accept that change that they're asking for.
In this, at this stage, right now in this process.
I'm talking about anytime this thing needs to be changed as we go through the.
Oh, no, once this becomes zoning, once you adopt it tonight and whatever form you adopted and if you adopt it tonight. Once it becomes adopted, then any change to that zoning text has to go through the whole rezoning process again. Now, I do want to mention that there is, an applicant can ask for a deviation from a standard that is not. And a rezoning, there are certain deviations they can ask for, but if you're actually changing a standard and the, the text itself, it's a rezoning through the whole process.
This is what was written.
Yeah.
It's the law.
Yeah. So everything in this proposal, for example, in the overlay district, I don't know, the whole list of, of uses, right?
That's come up.
If there's a, a use that we would want to add. To this use or delete from this use, that whole process.
Yes, and the whole.
That's what, that's the reason we have to be careful with the way we word it. And not, and that come, I was going to be bringing that up in my, when we got to that part of it. I mean, right now, this, those are just the only two I had in this, there's several I have in the actual overlay. But that's the reason why we have to be so cautious in, in the wording we use because. One, you can't be too restrictive.
Right, yeah.
But two, you have to be, you know, there's that fine balance restrictive enough.
Just for clarification, there is a procedure in. Article thirty-one, which allows for minor. Amendments.
Yes.
Yeah, the developer can do those, yes, but they're.
And that doesn't require action by the condition, doesn't require action by the. Or the trust. Making a decision made in. The decision.
But things like uses would not be.
I can go through the other, do we want, are we doing both at the same time? I guess we can.
Everything, everything's all one.
All right, so then when we actually get into article thirty-four. My first question is Jerry alluded to the permitted uses. We go down through and read those. I'm concerned about, as I said, you know, when, when you start specifying certain ones. How restrictive is that? And then, and then you turn around and then in the prohibited uses, you use the term. Uses not specifically authorized as permitted use in this article, the zoning resolution are prohibited. Is that, there again, if it's not up here. How restrictive does that next in, in thirty-four oh five? And I'll go this route in this day and age constitutional.
Yeah, so the way the uses themselves are written, there is some leniency in it. In fact, a lot of communities will utilize the NICS codes. And I do not use the NICS codes because when you use the NICS codes, it's very specific on those types of uses. So I use broader categories so that there is a little more flexibility. What Carl is getting at is that tends to conflict with thirty-four point oh five A. Because if, if it's not specifically listed there, then that flexibility kind of gets diluted. So I would leave the uses as they're written. And then I would tend to play with the wording in A would be my recommendation.
They, they both, it just seems like, as you said, they seem to counteract one another.
Tony.
The wording about the uses not specified is exactly the same as in our other article.
Insofar as if it's not listed, it's prohibited.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's standard blank, it's been all of the. And we currently have multiple.
Hey, I refresh my memory, I, I guess I don't remember that being in our original, was it?
In the very first, yeah, I believe I had it.
Okay, and then I missed it, but there again, I still, I mean, if there's some way to. With respect and the fact that this is the way it's been done in the past, it doesn't necessarily mean what's been done in the past is correct. We might want to at least look at a, a different way to, like you said, Holly, maybe change that wording a little bit because I think. I'm reading this and if it's not up here, you don't do it.
Kind of like the conditional uses were.
Yeah.
And we, you couldn't outguess what the next greatest thing was somebody wanted conditional use for, so it wasn't permitted.
Yeah, exactly.
So I, I think you need some kind of language in there because you don't want someone to wiggle something and that's not up at the top completely. But like, for example, offices or it's more, actually more retail. Doesn't list every kind of retail there is out there, it just says for other similar retail uses. So maybe we say something about uses or similar uses not specifically authorized as permitted. But I, I get a little. Nervous about that, because what's similar then?
Within it becomes subjective. I mean.
Exactly, so I'm.
Best permitted.
That's the library, isn't it?
On this one, I would almost argue to keep it the way it is and then you, you just say that because up at the top. Other similar retails allowed, that you can make that determination of what that is.
Yeah.
But I would.
That did, I just needed it explained a little bit better to me because it seemed, like I said, counterproductive. Moving on down. Actually, I'm gonna move down for a while, then I'm gonna jump back up because it works that way. Where you have office and veterinarians, pet, pet grooming shops and indoor only pet boarding facilities. Is there such a thing? Because they all have outside dog runs.
I believe I have seen indoor runs.
Where they're boarding?
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess I've never had my dog at one of those. Okay, good down to prohibited, well, prohibited uses. It says no trailer of any type, no boats and sea, no motorhomes, no have, no equipment of any type shall be parked in front of. Doing construction, I mean, is that, is that somewhere covered because there are job trailers and that kind of stuff that are on a job site?
Why don't we say no recreation trailers there? Because that's what that's really trying to get at.
That's what I thought, but I did, was to, okay. Uh, thirty-four oh five C is in Carl. The other thing I guess would be my question on that same one, if a. Business is having some kind of a, I don't know, activity, whatever businesses do sometimes. Would that also like if they had for a special event, food trucks or anything like that?
No, food truck, do we not allow? Molly, do we allow food trucks? Did we have that in here? I don't think this would prohibit a food truck.
Okay.
I would recommend that we add food trucks to the permitted uses, so.
If I can, I'll move on down, just so, not taking all night. Down at an H, I'm going, if I'm going to read H, but then I'm going to refer back up to F in the previous section. No drive-through of any kind shall be permitted. This prohibition includes drive-throughs associated with banks, restaurants, coffee shops or other similar uses. This does not include pickup windows or curbside. Curbside pickup as defined in this resolution. You go back up. And the allowed uses, permitted uses, eating and drinking facilities, including wineries and microbreweries, including. Those with curbside and pickup windows.
Correct, so they're not allowed to have drive-throughs, but they are allowed to have curbside and pickup windows. So it's down below, it's saying, drive-throughs do not include curbside pickup or.
Okay.
Pickup windows.
Holly, you talked about that a lot, right?
Yeah.
The thing that just differentiates that, you don't order at the window.
Correct.
This is where you place your order online or on the phone or whatever, and you're just going through quickly to get your order and depart. So that's really the differentiation.
So there's not as much stacking involved.
Okay. Alrighty. Thanks for sharing with me.
The thing that Holly mentioned during that discussion was, whole intention is to get people out of their cars.
Correct.
And so you don't want them stacking up at, at a, at a pickup window, placing their orders, driving around. Get out of your car, go in store, every time.
All right, so moving on into. Part of my favorite section. Where we were discussing lighting.
Yes.
This is all lighting shall be directed towards the ground and the, and the interior of the parcel and shall be full cutoff lighting. Uplighting shall be prohibited. What about landscape lighting?
Um, down at the.
Did I miss it?
Yeah, down in.
Of course I did.
Three, all light fixtures shall be cutoff type fixtures except for decorative light fixtures. That what, that what you're referring to?
So, say, what section was that in?
P three.
No, actu- actually, I'm in. I'm in seven.
Seven, okay. Okay, so yes, we can add the except for decorative lighting in seven, like we have it in three.
Okay. Because that, I mean, that, that part really took, and landscape lighting, everybody seems to like it, I don't. Down in eight. About the lighting after hours, only lighting needed for safety and security may remain lit after close of business, in which case all the lighting shall be reduced by fifty percent. Safety and security, who is going to determine that?
The individual lot owner, so if you guys wanted to enforce that, they would have to tell you what they think is safety. It's, it's language that some communities don't even put in their regulations because it's hard to enforce. We went back and forth at, at the committee levels of whether or not we were going to put it in there, what number we were going to use. I think we landed on fifty percent, but I'm not gonna, this is not.
I like, I like the idea of, you know, of lighting reduction, but I also don't want a dark parking lot that, you know, is anywhere near where residents. Could potentially be walking through. And then again, it's like I said, when you use a term like safety and security, who determines that? I think the only other thing I have. If we go to. S one, it's under signs.
Yep.
Signs shall be designed to adhere to rural design theme utilizing natural mineral materials such as stone, wood, brick. Sign colors and fonts should align with rural character, utilizing green, browns, tans, whites, muted blues. My concern, and, and I, I understand, I, I know we, I remember the discussion very well. But aren't we dealing or dealing with companies' logos?
Yeah, you are, and that can be an issue. When you start getting into logos, it can be a First Amendment thing. So I would say in that particular case. Um, so I would say in that particular case, that the applicant would request a deviation from the standard. And would provide that to you as a reason why they're doing that.
And that's it.
Any other discussion? Well, it's a pleasure of the board.
Are we gonna make any of those changes?
Yes.
Okay, if that's the case, then I would make the motion to approve this as corrected.
That's, uh, Article thirty-one.
Article thirty-one and thirty-four as corrected along with the definitions.
Yeah.
And can I go through the changes that I have so that make sure we're on the same?
Probably be a good place.
So in thirty-one point oh four, I have. Nope, let me start up higher.
Thirty-one oh two.
In thirty-one point oh two, we're removing the first sentence and replacing it with prior to submitting a formal application and a development plan. The applicant shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township and no more than two members of the zoning commission. And then in thirty-one point oh four, after ten, um. We're removing the X number of copies, um, and then replacing it with. Um. With a minimum of ten hard copies or as otherwise determined by the zoning and zoning commission or zoning inspector.
I would say zoning commission.
Zoning commission, that's what I have, okay, so zoning commission. Those are the only two things I have in thirty-one.
Yes.
And then in thirty-four. Um. I have thirty-four point oh five. C, um, we're adding the word recreation so that it reads no recreation trailer of any type and then keeps going.
Thirty-four oh four, were there any changes at all that we? On E?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know if we decided on that.
Yes.
We are.
Thought we did, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so thirty-four point oh four, we're adding food trucks. Uh, thirty-four point oh five, we're adding the word recreation and C, like I just read. And then. And. Thirty. Four point. Oh seven P, was there anything before we get to thirty-four point oh seven P?
Uh, no.
Okay, uh, P seven, we're adding except for decorative lighting at the end of that.
Okay. So is the, is the uplighting shall be prohibited, but except for decorative lighting?
Correct.
Can you say decorative in landscaping, or decorative, or does that pretty much cover?
I think it covers the land.
Okay, alright.
And then. I think.
The only other thing was we, I was, the, the, the safety and security, you said that that would, they would come to us, okay.
Yep, that, and then the signs, I said they would come to us.
The signs also, okay.
So those are the only changes I had to.
The discussion of the drive-through, that was gonna be as is?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt thirty-one and thirty-four as changed.
Make a motion, we adopt thirty-one and thirty-four as change, and the definitions, I'm sorry, and the definitions as changed.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Jackson.
Aye.
Richardson.
I am.
Paul.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
That concludes the, uh, hearing, we're gonna reconvene our business portion, um, the signature page. You guys signed it. We can get a copy for Doug and he can. Okay, good, alright, just, just didn't want to hold him up.
They've done already.
Okay, good, thank you.
Where'd you get that? Pick that up.
Dave, I don't, I didn't, I don't know, I'm assuming it got put on here, I didn't see, but since, I don't know how Holly's staying, are you staying?
Um, if I'm gonna get to my next time. Which shouldn't be next if they follow the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, well, there you go. Okay, gentlemen, we're getting back on track here, the, um. Discussion of the, uh, new contract for crossroads planning, Holly. So one-year extension of her contract for monthly fee of forty-five hundred dollars effective July first twenty-three and go to June thirtieth of. Twenty twenty-four.
Anything?
I, I.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um. I did the math, and if you guys do the one-year contract versus the six-month that she proposed. Um, I believe. In twenty twenty-two, up to current to to June thirtieth, um, it was, uh. Somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars that it was in the original contract amount.
Yeah.
This would total out to be about fifty-four for a year, so it's.
Yeah.
A savings for the township by going into the one-year contract versus the six-month.
And 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 knowing how many hours we've gotten Holly for. And we will be getting Holly for, I S Y I recommended the monthly fee.
Yeah.
Um.
The other night, they were giving me all this stuff, I said, you gotta go for the monthly, you're gonna get a better deal for you.
Uh, yeah, uh. Yeah. Headphone will be disconnected all of a sudden.
Yeah.
That was one of the reasons why I recommended the monthly fee.
Yeah, I do wanna point out, the one thing I did do in this, just so that you're aware of it, they did limit it to three night meetings a month. Um, if you want more, I'll do more, but it is at a higher.
Right, but it's, that doesn't, you didn't say anything about phone calls.
I didn't say anything about phone calls, it's just the night meetings.
Well, and the thing is, I mean, I I know. What the committee has done, and I know Holly, those are night meetings, she's saying, but I also know there's a lot of meetings. Granted, you may be attending those meetings for other communities at the same time. But it is also to the benefit of Harlem Township, so.
And I'm, like I said, in the, in the, what I am available for unlimited daytime meetings, so if. They need me to come up and talk to a developer about a concept plan or anything like that, I I'm available for that.
Gentlemen's or a motion?
Uh, I have make a motion. To approve that, uh, uh, the crossroad planning for a monthly of forty-five hundred dollars effective July first twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth twenty. Twenty-four, and I guess. Have myself to sign on behalf of the trustees.
Very good. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, um. Richardson.
Hi.
Paul.
Alright.
Jackson.
Hi. Hey, motion carrying.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Holly.
Yeah, I don't think so, we got Jim on the docket here to give a report.
Jim's gonna come up next and probably take.
Oh, I'll, I'll listen.
Um, I'm just gonna give a quick report on Jim Steele Smith on the, uh, Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, we touched on this last night at our meeting, and I thought it would be pertinent to, uh. Uh, advise the, uh, trustees as to what's going on also. Uh, as you know, we've come up on one year, or just after one year, because we just renewed Holly. And, uh, on her anniversary. Um, some interesting facts about the Strategic Planning Committee. As we came together and continued to evolve. Uh, they've all started, all the, all our subcommittees have started working together. Along with our new zoning director, along with members of the zoning commission. And the information flow has been tremendous. And. We'd never had this before. Uh, just the communications that comes from getting on the phone with the members, everybody cooperating. So we are now starting to see the fruits of our labor, and it's increasing, in fact, it's, it started increasing today. After I already wrote this. Um, but just an interesting fact, so Harlem Township has had a PRCD. Which is our original overlay. Um, we are always pushing that along with our new, because it's less density. And one of the things that the Strategic Planning Committee has always focused on that, and that's what brought a lot of us together. Were these projects, less density, more open space, that type of thing. At this time, as we start to come together, we are now working on four parcels, one is. Uh, come to a conclusion, they're getting ready for construction. We have three more parcels, these aren't just being talked about, these are being worked on. And being drawn up for a total of three hundred and thirty-seven acres. And it's going to increase. Another thing that's interesting is there again, that all came about by communication. Working together, we even have our our watershed committee, and their concerns were, are always brought to these people. And other concerns of the township. Um. The items that you just approved tonight on the mixed-use district. Uh, we've been working on this with inquiries. And people have been watching Harlem Township, they have been communicating with Harlem Township. And they have reached out on their own, know what we're doing, and by the time they contact us. They have a good idea of what they can and can't do, and, uh, we then sit down and start going over. Uh, their project, knowing that their project's not gonna start until the sewers get here. But they're acquiring ground, looking to acquire ground, and we now have three projects totaling two hundred and sixteen acres. That we're working on. So we've got almost five hundred and fifty acres, and we're just getting rolling. So, but this is, all comes about. With the Strategic Planning Committee, the zoning department, the the Board of Zoning. And everybody communicating. And as we talk with, uh, in Holly, because as we were talking about. Uh, we don't necessarily have the meetings, but we're all on the phone. Hey, what do you think of this? Or what can I do? What can I do? Um, talked to a gentleman on the watershed committee today about some concerns I had. They're communicating, everything's communicating, and I just wanted to relate that to the board and let you know. Uh, that the fruits of our labor are now coming forward. And it's all beneficial for Harlem Township, we're sort of doing things our way, our vision, our original vision. And that's for open space and preserving some of the land, we know we have to let some businesses in, we know we have to let some residential in. But we're trying and moving forward on our pace. So, any questions? Good, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Hey. Um. Cemetery, you wanna report on, uh? Uh, at Barnhart and.
Yeah, I've, uh, I'm not quite ready to report yet, Dave, but I, and I did have a few things I can share with the board and people are nice. Uh, I've been looking at a way to mark these sites down here, and, uh. This plate is what I referred to, I think it was maybe the last meeting, but it's a plate that has a square T on it. And it can be stamped with the individual site numbers, uh, and lot number, uh, individual lot numbers rather. Uh, and I've got a new, uh, uh, numbering system that has been approved by Sims that they can. Comply with that numbering system, and it's designed to reduce the number of, uh, required plates and 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 pins. Uh, so these stakes, these will fit on a rebar, a five-eighths rebar. And their press, pressure fits, so the rebar's driven to the ground, these are on top of that and driven in. And then these are marked accordingly to the to the lots. So, uh, I've, uh, got the, um. The company that makes these will stamp these. But I don't even wanna bring up the the price, they wanna use stamp. Anyway, these are seven dollars and. Eighteen cents, I believe, per hundred, for a hundred quantity. Uh, for less than a hundred, they're eight, eight dollars and some, so it's cheaper to go than a hundred. So we're gonna need about a hundred of them, uh, to do, and, uh, so I'm working with, uh, the, uh, Lewis Land Surveyor, um. They can install these on their pins when they drive the survey pins in. Uh, however, each pin has to be chamfered on the top, uh, which is another. Little curve into it today, uh, so these things will properly fit down over the rebar. And so now, that's what we're working on now, how we're gonna, how we're gonna champer, champer the end of each cutoff rebar. Those rebar are thirty inches long, and they have to be driven in, of course, by them, and. And then once the rebar is in, this goes on top, it has to be flush with the. The ground level, of course, so we don't mow over them, so, so that's kind of where I am right now, I'll have, I'll have everything wrapped up hopefully by next meeting, uh. And give you figures, facts and figures and so on, and then Lisa, were you able to get the tax exempt form up to them yet?
Yeah, I, uh, text you back and said, couldn't get the email to go through, because it got returned to.
Yeah, you didn't.
Two times.
Okay, can we?
At two different times.
Okay, I'll, I'll contact it tomorrow and see how they want us to do it, so. You had the form, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just, I'll let you know tomorrow. Okay, thank you, that's, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Uh, administrative, yeah, take it from here, Kendra.
Sure, um, I have to present to the board, uh, the equal employment opportunity policy. I'm in working with our new updating, uh, employee manual, we have a section in there for this, but, uh. We're doing it as a standalone policy because the fire department also needs it for, uh, grants and, um. One of their contingents that they have to have in compliance, so this particular policy was developed. By the Ohio Civil Rights Commission and the US Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. So all we had to do was input our name for Harlem Township. And it just, and I had submitted it to the trustees and emailed, um, last week for review.
Yep. Um, do you have a motion to approve, uh, this resolution?
So moved.
Second. Second. All those in favor, aye, aye. Motion carried.
Just fix your typo on your, uh, paper too, it's not implement, it's employment. Hmm, FYI.
Of course. Um, okay, so the next item I have is, um, we've been trying to figure out how to upload. Our recorded meetings to our website. Um, our formatting is outdated and it won't allow us to update. We've tried to zip the files, we've tried to email, and we've tried. Downloading all, a different program to try to convert the files, and it's not compatible. Uh, what we have come up with is, uh, if we create a YouTube channel. It's compatible, and so we can create a YouTube channel for, at, right now, YouTube is free. We can create the channel, we can upload our Zoom to YouTube, so people could go into YouTube and just put in Harlem Township, and it'll come up. Um, we can also put it on our website through the YouTube link, and they can view our, um. Zoom meetings, whether it's zoning commission, BZA, trustees, strategic planning, if they have stuff that needs to go on, anything that goes on our YouTube. Channel can go on. YouTube or on our website, uh, several municipalities do use this as a secure resource for doing. Um, their videos, and they actually use it instead of Zoom to live record. And it's free, instead of paying for Zoom, so maybe that's something futuristically you might wanna look at. At this point in time, I would like to just get a YouTube channel so we can. Convert our videos and get them uploaded for our residents to be able to view in real, I mean, like. The next day, like tomorrow, I could have, you know, it would be instantaneous almost to have them posted.
So a motion to approve creating the YouTube channel?
So moved.
Second, what's, what's required, uh? What do you have to do to get that set up?
Really, it takes about five minutes, you just go on, put in your email address, make a password, and there's a couple. Uh, brief questions you answer, and you have a channel.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hmm. Uh, motion's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye, aye, motion carried. Your next item?
Uh, we are still working on, um, in monitoring the AV system separation, it was brought to my attention. Um, I believe it was about ten days ago that, um. Residents that are logging in to watch meetings can hear and see everything, but we can't hear them. Um, we've consulted with several AV. Um, we've consulted with several AV um. Companies and we've gotten a lot of feedback on potential things to try to try to get that opened up. It seemed, uh, we looked at it here this evening that we had it um muted in. Various places that might not let them be able to unmute themselves, so we're trying that tonight and seeing if that works. Um, the only one that's on here is Mr. Kavler right now, so uh we'll, we'll see how that works.
And drew it on.
And it might squeal, yeah.
It'll tell us it's working.
Yeah, we know it was working.
One of the, one of the AV specialists that I talked to is a gentleman by the name of Bill Petty from Midwest Tech. Technical associates, um, he said he can come in and do a full um inspection of our system. And he could upgrade, he thinks our memory speed, which is uh four K, he thinks it'd be upgraded it to like eight K, it would. Take care of a few of our issues, not a lot, but a few. Uh, he gave me an estimate of a hundred and thirty dollars to come in and do. He said it'd probably take you several, you know, like three or four hours to do this and um. So he could perform this and. At least give us a better idea of where we stand, plus upgrade our our memory and our speed on our system. Um, he has looked at it in the past and said, we have an amazing system, it's very well put together. Yes, there's some items that are outdated and need replaced, like the one projector. He thinks he can get this monitor working pretty simply, it may need a replaced monitor, but he thinks he could get this. Working pretty easily, um, there is um. Yeah, what's that thing called?
The UPS.
Yeah. The UPS. Uh, you know, updated battery, there's, you know.
The UPS is dead.
It needs something, so there's various things that he's already identified that'll need repaired, he's working on getting um. Quotes for items that are compatible with the system we already have, so we don't have to completely. Care out and reconstruct the whole thing from scratch.
Okay.
We, do we have an idea on timeline, I mean, this, this has been going on for three months, at least.
And the, the thing is, we, he's having trouble finding, and so are the other people I've talked to. They're trying to find things compatible with Symposium that we have. And this is old enough that. They really want to find something compatible because it would save the township. A lot of time, money and headache, but yet we're spending time trying to find things compatible because it's outdated. Um, so, you know. I've got them looking at doing the full replacement and doing just upgrades and updates and repairs. And giving us estimates on both, so you guys can see where we stand.
Okay, gentlemen, you want to approve the hundred and thirty dollars for him to come in?
Make a motion, we approve the hundred and thirty dollars to have him come in and at least get us an idea where we're at.
Motion's been moved and seconded, all of them favor aye, aye, motion carried.
My next item is I'm requesting to be able to attend uh a conference, October nineteenth of twenty twenty three. Um, out in Wisconsin that is being put on by Rainmaker, which is the. A software company that has our Sims, which is our cemetery um programming. They're going to do some massive updates and so they're providing training and a conference on all the updates that are coming. They also provide um GPS and drone imaging services. Um, and some other thing, features that they would be going on over at this conference. Um, it is a one day conference, but I would have to be out of office three days for travel time, the conference is sixty dollars. And hotel is a hundred and nine a night plus, because it's in Wisconsin, we're not taxing them, so it'd be uh twelve and a quarter percent tax. With uh twenty four ninety five a night resort fee, total cost uh for the township, if approved, would be three hundred and sixty eight dollars and seven cents. Um, I would be willing to cover my costs of travel.
Motion to approve.
Been moved.
Second.
Uh, I'm, I'm second, I would like to say uh, because they're aware of what my efforts here are on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, to make sure that whatever they're gonna be covering out there won't. Effect what I'm trying to do, I don't want to reinvent the wheel here, in other words, if, if they're, they have GPS. Technology that might apply to what I'm trying to do here, I'd like to know it.
Oh, right, absolutely.
Because I don't want to move forward with this if.
Yeah.
They have some revolutionary way to. Identify these laws.
That was part of why I thought it would be vital for somebody from us to go there and get this information.
But that won't be until October.
Yeah, but this isn't.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the problem, but I I can have a conversation with them to see, because they're aware of what.
Yeah.
We're doing.
Right.
So I can have that conversation with them maybe and uh, just kind of confirm that it's not going to affect this. Project here. But yeah.
I would, I would, I mean, I'm, I would just guess, I mean, even if. There's gonna have to be some sort of a marker for them to start, have a starting point at.
Right.
So this would, I think they may work together.
Okay, yeah, could be. Yeah. Oh, did you second the motion?
I, I think I did, yeah.
All those in favor, aye, 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 motion carried.
Um, the next item I have, I just wanted to uh let the board know that Department of Commerce. And we'll be opening application for cemetery grant beginning June thirtieth. Um, it's uh just a show of how great our minds are in this township, because the zoning director. Um, the fiscal officer and myself all came across this exact same grant information, I think simultaneously.
You're first, you're number one.
As we all have the information to Jerry Paul, like, you know. So uh it is a maximum grant award around twenty five hundred dollars, and it's to cover exceptional maintenance. Um, record sophomore installation of section markers, uh driveway repairs and stuff like that, so. Um, it is our plan to go forward with this application once it becomes active.
It's active June thirtieth to what?
Yeah, it didn't give a deadline as.
Okay.
Then we have to apply for it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, good.
Um, and it is to be used, it's not a reimbursement grant, it has to be used after you're awarded. And you get the award, then you have to use.
We'll have to do a special fund.
Yeah. And uh then um, I personally have been invited by the Delaware County Township Association to give a presentation on June eighth. Um, at that meeting, um, I had discussed this with um, a couple of people involved with Strategic Planning Committee. Um, Holly has offered to put a small mini uh presentation together, uh Mike Cannon. Our Director of Dining was gonna attend with me and we were going to uh represent Harlem Township at this meeting. Um, I have also been invited to attend a regional growth and development conference hosted by Morpsey in Westerville on May twenty fifth. Um, so, and Mike Cannon and I are all planning on attending that one. Um, no presentation required for that one. Um, I wanted to let the board know that we have finally completed all of our record retention requirements for all of our departments in Harlem Township. Uh, not. I think we've got everything sent out to uh Delaware County Records Center uh for spreading, and we're just awaiting their certification and everything's been handled accordingly. And Bureau of Workman's Comp came in on May fourth and completed their final air quality test. Um, the unofficial results, which is what he told me verbally by reading his. Um, machine and devices when he was going through. Uh, was, there was no carbon monoxide. Uh, was norman- normal ranges of carbon dioxide, the only thing that he indicated showing anything up was. Diesel fumes, which was to be expected because of the fire trucks in the boat, you know, that's on the other side of the building and it kind of comes through the. So uh basically, we got all clear, we're good to go, no lingering or existing problems. Greenhall was officially professionally cleaned on uh April twenty fourth. Which raised a question by uh some of the other groups that use the green stall about um. Getting a hose bib, because they thought that we were supposed to be having a hose bib put in, first I'd heard of it, since I've been here, but.
But I'm, I spent on your agenda for a year.
Yeah.
About two years now.
I had um a couple platters come out, take a look at what it would take, I'm waiting on the quotes to come back in from them.
Okay.
To get the hose bit put in, um, I was, it was indicated that it would be more than likely less than five hundred dollars. So, yeah, that it's like literally punching it right, I mean, the, the water is right there on just the other side of the wall, so it should be minimal.
Right.
Cost to do that.
Yeah.
Um, with the weather finally breaking, V and T Roofing was able to go up and repair the storm damage. From last winter, uh on May twelfth, while they were up there, they discovered. Uh, some additional V uh flashing, I think is what they called it, right? Um, that was um missing and they weren't able to see it before, because they had the, when they lifted up a section of the. Uh, cap, that's where they found it, um, so we're. Kind of, we're gonna talk to Chief when he gets back, kind of waiting to see um. The recommendations on proceeding with that, because uh Ray and I kind of discussed it, and we thought. That it's over the area where the leak was, and we thought maybe it should have been included in the original estimate for this repair, so. We'll have to see how that goes. Um, the electrician uh was at the park on four twenty seven, did the repairs to the service panel. Um, at the Feller House, he inspected the um. All the park electric equipment, yes, there's another typo. Um, and. He said that um he would be able to remove those two temporary panels. Um, and it would be up to the township to store them. Um, if we wanted to keep them, if we don't, then we can dispose of them, whatever, you know, we have to let him know, if we want him disposed, he'll dispose them.
I would suggest that the. Heritage group, because they're the ones that probably use that the most, if they could be stored possibly in the barn over there.
Yeah, the recommendation was for us to keep them in store, he said those are very expensive.
They are very expensive, yeah.
Probably thought that there was no reason why the township wouldn't want to store them. Um, and he said everything else seemed to be working. As it should, he said everything was gonna come in at the cost you originally had estimated and uh.
But he will disconnect those two.
He said it was gonna disconnect a bunch of them, and I did let him know that we were expecting farmer's permit uh this coming Thursday or well tomorrow. And um, he said he was going to make every effort to have that done before that, so. Um, I have, I wasn't over there to, you know, since I talked to him to see if it was done yet, but that was uh where I was at.
Thank you.
Does it remove electricity from the park area?
The, the temporary panel, like, right, it sits right by where the tree, the, the. Big tree is, that panel needs to come out, it's, it's a temporary, it can be put back in. But probably somebody's gonna have to rebuild the frame that it's on, is the problem, it can, it can actually. It can actually be installed quite easily back into place. And the same with the one at the uh pine trees for the gazebo, it's also just a temporary, there's a box. Underground box right there that the leads are on. Right, the, the electrical will still be there at, at the main, at the main boxes, but that one individual one there. That by the, where the tree is at Christmas time, that one won't be there. I mean, unless somebody puts it back in.
Okay. Fire department.
Good evening, um, run totals. I already updated what you have in front of you, so we've had two hundred and ten runs for twenty twenty three. Uh, sixty eight of those are fire runs and a hundred and forty two are EMS. Sixty seven percent of our runs are EMS at this point, and we are now averaging one and a half runs per day. Um, couple resolutions for you, resolution twenty three dash zero five one nineteen. That zero one three, uh approval to change in the conditions of employment for Matthew Versier. Um, to approve the changing conditions of employment from permanent part time at sixteen sixty two. To part time at sixteen twenty nine, effective earlier this month.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, aye. Motion carried.
And with that change, created resolution twenty three zero five one nine T dash zero one four. Approval of the changing traditions of employment for Clayton Waneymaker. Uh, move to improve, approve the changing conditions of employment for Clayton. From part time sixteen twenty nine an hour to one unit permanent part time with hourly wage of sixteen sixty two, effective six four twenty three.
So a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, second, all those in favor, aye. Motion carried.
All right, um, last week, uh, thanks, some of you were in attendance when we put our new apparatus in service. Um, thank you for coming to attend and for your support and all that. Uh, with that, we have resolution twenty three dash zero five one seven T dash oh one five, approval to declare. The old engine, the nineteen ninety seven HME rescue bumper out of service.
Uh, so moved.
With a value of one dollar.
Motion to approve.
Has that been taken off our uh insurance?
After you vote, it will come off tomorrow morning.
Okay, thanks. Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And with that value of one dollar for resolution twenty three dash zero five one seven T dash zero one six. Approval for the sale of the nineteen ninety seven HME rescue bumper, the old engine, uh, approved the sale of it. To Hamilton Township Volunteer Fire Department for one dollar. Uh, this Hamilton Township Volunteer Fire Department is down in Southern Ohio, it is not the one.
Oh, okay.
Outside of two seventy, it is a different Hamilton Township. And I can provide you a little background on that department if you would still like, or you, we can just go about it.
We read it.
I've read the letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Uh, motion approved.
Is that gonna be safe for them to drive down there? How are they gonna get down, Ray? So it'll be, okay.
Motion's been moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Um, in this, we were supposed to name somebody and sign the title over to.
Yep.
We want a name.
I'm, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, but we, we gotta, we're gonna need a notary, we have a notary here.
I don't have my stamp, though.
I'll take care of this week.
Okay.
Okay, maintenance, I think we've covered the roads, I don't think, uh, parks. Thing on parks.
I don't have anything for you tonight.
Okay, fair enough. Zoning, Mike, you got a whole page of your own.
I do.
Yeah, just to give you an update on uh where we stand on the permits for the month, we're at thirty five. For this year right now, last year, the other month, we were forty four, so we're down nine, and most of those are accessory buildings, is the difference on that. On our open enforcement issues, uh, got the Harlem Road uh project, it was. The debris and junk cars and um, we're to the point where. It's, it's to Cory, and Cory's actually here tonight, I don't know if you guys even realize that, Cory's here tonight.
I'm in the back like usual.
We're probably gonna need to get together and discuss the next step on that one and the uh State Route six oh five. Um, to go on down to Lewis Road. And talking with Cory, when we were trying to get that cleaned up, we discussed the fact that the. Pictures we had weren't clear enough that we thought we could do anything with it, so I finally got ahold of the resident, and they. Are gonna get, try to get some more pictures, I told him, you know, don't do anything crazy, don't go into person's property, go to the edge of your property, if you, if you want to get them. Get them for me and send it to me, if we want to keep pushing that point, and he said uh, he felt safe and he was gonna go ahead and do that, so. It's probably gonna go ahead. The Covian Drive, uh, it was making good progress, they had dumpsters there. Last couple weeks, I haven't seen any more progress, so I'm gonna get ahold of him and talk with him about some expectations. He'll be receptive to that, I'm sure. Um, Green Cook Road, I wanted to revisit that, I went out and talked to uh. To the resident there and we walked his property, and we pointed out, I pointed out some things that I thought were the reasons why the. The complaint was filed in the first place, he was receptive to cleaning it up, he gave me his commitment, so I'll go out there probably middle of next week and. And see how far it's gone. Had a new one, a fifty nine oh one Harlem Road, I guess it's not new, it's been a few weeks now, uh, it was a new complaint, but uh. They seem to be cleaning up uh nicely over there. The dump truck issue is also something we probably need to discuss with Cory tonight, about what we want to do and where we go with that. As far as the uh, there's a fifteen three ninety six needles road that was brought up to me. I stopped by there tonight, nobody was home, uh, I'll probably have to stop by after hours, because they're probably working. So either I'll stop by after about five o'clock, or I'll send him a letter and have him call me. I seem to be getting a lot of response when I, if I can't get him during the day, I'll, I'll fire a letter out to him and let him. Let him know that we have a concern, you know, it's not saying that they're under any kind of violation yet or not. And they give me a call and I've, I've had some luck with that. Uh, Glenn Sports Barn, I know we had. People had issues with the lights he had on his temporary sign and I did that with him, he called me, told me he took his lights down, so. That's a good thing. Um, as far as, as new or potential issues, still have heard nothing on the, uh, distillery hit issue we had. I don't know if that'll be coming up, I'm hearing rumors that they're moving equipment in, so I would hope they're either going to. Come in and call or I'm going to get a complaint from the next door neighbor saying they're operating already, so one of those two things is going to happen. Um. Did have some action on an ice skating rink, they called me, that resident called me today. And I need to do my due diligence and do some research before I get back with them and I will probably also have to. Have a conference with Corey about this, but, uh. I'll let you know when anything more comes of that. Uh. That's about it on that page, I, I did want to say one thing on the development side, like Jim said, we do have a lot of people calling and requesting. Uh, we're going to do some things and, and this kind of goes hand in hand with, with Polly and, and her going over and above. You know, the, we're getting calls from developers and they're finding me just by happening to get on the website and they see development behind my name. They call me and Jim and I were talking and we think. That we need to get another webpage, another part of the, of the webpage going, another page and develop and just assign it to economic development or develop. Anything like that to get more information out there and maybe get a brochure made so that, um. We can get that information out to developers when they call. And Holly, I sent an email to Holly, I worked with her and she said, uh, she'd be, she said she'd be very helpful with that and help us get that going, so. I think that's going to help us even more with getting the right people involved and getting the right kind of businesses.
That all falls under that monthly thing, right?
And it's not a meeting or anything like that, it's an email, so.
I have Molly here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
And then lastly, I want to, uh, resolution twenty-three dash oh five one seventeen dash oh one nine. Uh, I would like the. Trustees to appoint Steve Eisenbrow as a board member to the Board of Zoning Appeals, effective five eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, have a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve that.
Second, all those in favor, aye, aye, motion carried. Uh, do you want to? Executive at the end with Corey and?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any? Health Department, I'm sorry, did you have something this evening?
Okay, um, if you guys are looking for us, we have moved out of our three buildings on West Winter Street as of Monday. Um, and we are not fully in our new building yet, so, um, we hope to be there in the next couple of weeks, it's at four seventy South Sandusky Street. Until then, we're operating out of the Sunbury Office, um, which is at the Sunbury Kroger Plaza. Um, so if you are trying to get ahold of somebody, they probably are not sitting at their office zone because it's been moved to the new building. So call, um, the Sunbury Office or leave that person a message so that they can return your call.
Okay. Thank you.
We're excited about our new building.
Anybody else have anything further? Johnny?
Wanted to remind everybody that our first, uh, Harlem Public Security and Food Truck event is tomorrow. It'll be free flame barbecue. And our, um, Farmer's Market also opens tomorrow. It'll be every Thursday through December.
What's the hours?
Um, four to seven, basically, and a free flame might not be set up till four, because.
Okay.
The Farmer's Market is all supposed to be set up by four.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
Are you guys doing something with Amanda? Are you gonna?
It wasn't on here, I don't know.
Not?
That's something I got, I thought we discussed that.
Okay. So we're good?
It was taken off, I was told to remember it, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. Gotcha.
If not, I'll make a motion that we go in the executive session with, uh, Mike Cannon and Corey attending.
Second.
Discussion of litigation.
Litigation. Uh, fact.
Second, roll call vote please.
Hi.
Paul.
All right, I'll do a second.
Hi.
We're in Mike Cannon. They said name, right?
Oh, boy.
Pretty regularly, so.
Take us off the air, Kendra.
Yeah. Can you initiate that, please?
Oh, yeah, we talk all the time, so. Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Well, I got to shut this off, so we're out of session.